Welcome, everybody. It is great to have you all here. I want to give a special welcome to our Board of Trustees for the library. And we're going to go ahead and we've got to call this meeting in order. So I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. And then I thought we'd go with first with a round of introductions. Welcome to our newest library board member. And by that way, we can just say hello. And then I'll start with some opening remarks. And now I look up into the air as the clerk calling the roll.
Halliburton.
Here.
Corliss.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Sted.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
All present.
And you need to do that as well.
I was going to say. May I also ask for a roll of call for the Board of Trustees of the Boise Public Library?
Johnson.
Here.
Kamal. Clany. Pantera.
Here.
Piesanesci.
Here.
Four present, one absent.
Evelyn, did you get called? You did. Oh, I missed that. Okay. All right. So yes, let's go around. Let's start with you, Mr. Chair, and we'll do introductions and then I'll take the meeting back.
I'm Ron Piesanesci, the current president of the Board of Trustees, the Boise Public Library.
I'm Colin Nash, Boise City Council President, also City Council's liaison to the libraries, which is important today.
I'm Evelyn Johnson on the Board of Trustees for the library.
Jimmy Halliburton, Boise City Council. It's good to see some of the trustees that were there when I was the liaison and some new ones as well. Welcome.
Thank you.
Kathy Corliss with the Boise City Council and District Three on the bench to include the Hillcrest Library.
I'm Eric Bellamoria, the Finance Director for the city of Boise.
I'm Lindsay Urb with Public Works. I'm the Facility Program Manager, so I oversee design and construction for city assets.
And I'm Jessica Dorr, the Library Director.
Good afternoon. I'm Courtney Washburn, the Chief of Staff for the city of Boise.
Good afternoon, Jordan Morales. I represent District Four on Boise City Council. I don't have a library in my district, but a couple right across the street and they're great libraries.
I'm Brian Clenny. I'm in my fifth year as a trustee and have enjoyed it so far.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Lucy Willetts. I represent District One in West Boise. And I've seen a lot of you when I've come to the board meetings. And also you haven't seen me when I've joined online, but I have been there. So thank you for your service. I was just saying to Brian, we really appreciate all that you do for our city. And we know that you take it very seriously and we appreciate you.
I'm Meredith Sted with Boise City Council, City Council President Pro Tem. I represent District Five, which includes, very lucky to include downtown and Bound Crossing.
And I'm Nikki Pantera, currently Vice President of the Board of Trustees. And this is also my fifth year.
Madam Mayor, I believe we have a Board of Trustee online as well.
Oh, we do. Oh, great. Would you like to say hello? We should be able to hear you. Who's online? Jill, are you online?
I am. Hello.
Oh, there you are. Great. We can see you now. Welcome.
Thank you.
Before I do opening remarks, I believe there's a motion. We need to have a motion to amend the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to accept the meeting agenda as posted, which removes the executive session item. As such, item has been intended only for the Boise City Council.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Do we need to do a roll call for motion two? Will you, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Halliburton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
All in favor of motion carries?
So we'll take up the executive session at five, once the library board has adjourned their meeting. That's how we'll do that? Okay, great. All right. Well, thanks, everybody. I wanted just to kick us off with a couple of things. First, just kind of point of order. I'm going to ask that the Chair of the Board of Trustees and I decided that we'd have everything go through me as Chair for this meeting, just for ease of order. So we're not both jostling over each other. So just ask with the discussion, both the library board and the council, as you normally would, will go through me for the, as acting Chair for this meeting. And then I just want to talk about both the goals for today and the agenda that we've got ahead of us. First off, we saw record engagement in, from the public in terms of the first services plan that was developed. Now the facilities plan, other work that Jessica and her team have done. And so I'm really excited about the level of engagement that we've seen. My goal today, our goal today in bringing both of our boards together is to provide staff with direction, particularly from council, with regard to libraries planning and then CIP planning. So the capital investment plan, planning process. And so Jessica Dorr has provided some recommendations. I look forward to the discussion about those. The discussion with Eric on what the CIP process would look like for future facilities improvements and future facilities. And then there'll be an opportunity for the consultants who are here to discuss with the council and the library board their report. And the, and with that, I believe you've got some opening remarks I'd like to pass over to you. And then we'll move into the agenda, starting with Jessica Dorr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate your introduction and the opportunity to say a few words to start this joint work session with the council and the library board. First off, I'd like to thank the mayor for joining us yesterday at our all-staff-in-service that all the staff of the Boise Public Library attended yesterday. And they were very appreciative of you. And I might say that we got a little round of applause when I did my opening comments and, and commented about how much support both the council and the mayor and the city has, as well as our own board for the staff and the work that they do. They very much appreciated that. In preparation for today's discussion, I've had the chance to reflect on the last time the council and board met for a joint work session in December of 2024. At that meeting, we updated you on the work we'd done so far to create the library facilities plan and then asked for your input as we were beginning to plan for the community listening sessions. I remember clearly at that December 2024 work session, my excitement about our shared interest in making sure the library has the support and resources it needs to continue to provide the excellent service to our community now and in the future. As you mentioned, Mayor, in your opening, Boisians use the library. They attend storytimes, they ask questions of library staff, they attend programs, become ultimate book nerds and check out books, both physically and in a digital form. The board took to heart our December discussion about the importance of having a plan that is feasible and that prioritizes taking care of what we currently have first and then looking for creative and financially sustainable ways to expand access. As a board member, I was truly honored to engage with the community during the listening sessions. We held the, we held to shape the plan. I was able to go to four of the five that we did across the city. Boisians are passionate about their library. They know library staff by name. They know how far they travel to visit each location. They know their favorite reading programs and they know what the library means to them and their family. We know how important our work as trustees is to help ensure that the library meets everyone's needs. I want to thank everyone in the community who joined us for a listening session, who provided input and suggestions either in person or in writing and who challenged us and pushed us to be both inclusive and bold. We believe direction from the mayor and the council, as well as hearing directly from the community, has resulted in a facilities plan that is comprehensive in its approach, while leaving room for opportunity and growth. And we look forward to discussing it with you today. Thank you.
Thank you. As Jessica moves into her presentation, you've got slides, right? I do want to reiterate some of what Ron just said. And it related to the surveys and reports, just how wonderful. Not only was it that so many people engaged, but that people so do really know which libraries they use for what. That we saw that people move across the city to, for services, to pick up books and to take part in other surveys, services, and people just love the library. And so as we look ahead, we both have to balance the needs that we have for more space. When you look at the, our peer cities, like we are underspaced. The needs that we have in current facilities and then the budget realities that we have in terms of funding and financing in the long run. And that's why I think this conversation is so important, because we'll hear from the director of our library, who's worked with her board and staff, has taken quite a few different inputs that she'll walk through to come up with some recommendations. We'll hear from Eric on what the planning needs to look like, so that we can prepare for the next 10 and 20 years. And then I really look forward to hearing from all of you, the direction you'd like us and our staff to take, to meet the needs that we know that we have. So Jessica, go ahead. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, members of the library board of trustees, thank you for being here today. I'm really looking forward to this discussion. Next month, we'll see my five-year anniversary at the city of Boise as your library director. And it truly has been an honor to lead the library and to work with all of you to support my favorite Boise Public Library, my favorite Boise institution, because of the impact that it provides for the community. So I will start today's discussion by sharing with you my recommendations. And as Mayor mentioned, they are based on everything that I have learned in my five years with the Boise Public Library. And then we'll be able to have a really robust discussion about those and really look for you for that alignment and guidance. I start every presentation with the mission of the Boise Public Library, which is to provide access and opportunity for everyone by connecting to people, to ideas, information and community. This is why I get up in the morning. This is why all the library staff that I have the honor of working with have chosen to work and to bring their talents to the Boise Public Library is because of how we believe in a remarkable city, a remarkable library can really make sure that in a, that we are helping provide access and opportunity for everyone. And as the mayor mentioned, my tenure, really one of the first things when I arrived at the library was working with the board and the community to create the strategic plan that we are currently operating under. So following the, the ending of the new main library project and COVID, we really wanted to reengage with the community and understand what programs and services the community expected at the time. So worked again with that board, with community listing, with surveys, with really trying to understand what were the programs and services? What was the impact that our community wanted us to provide? And this is how we came up with these four strategic pillars. Expanding access, increasing impact, optimizing resources and measuring our value. And as we talked about programs and services, what to me was really interesting is how linked that was to our facilities. People wanted to talk to us, not just about what we, what they wanted us to do in the community, but where they wanted us to be and what that looked like in terms of when they showed up at one of our physical locations. So almost immediately after that strategic plan was approved in 2024, we moved into our facility planning. And as the mayor mentioned, our facility plan is really important to us because it will help ensure that our libraries are welcoming, accessible, attractive and comfortable spaces for the entire community. This was our first plan since the year 2000. And in 2000, the only location that we had was our downtown library and a small storefront rental at the Boise Town Square Mall. So that facility plan really allowed for the creation of the branch models and has been, you know, the, the work that we were looking at over the last year. And also our first facility plan that did need to balance our current facilities and any, any growth opportunities as well. And I just really want to thank Public Works. I really want to thank Lindsay Urb for her leadership in this. This is truly a joint effort. I care very much about the quality of our storytimes. What are we doing in terms of our collection size? I don't care about our roofs, but I know I need one. And this, the partnership that we've been able to really deepen through this process has brought out the best in our city departments. Lindsay's team is phenomenal in knowing how to assess a roof, to keep it updated, to make sure it doesn't leak. And so one of the, the work that we did together really makes sure that this plan serves our needs. And that's particularly important, because when we are talking with other city departments, particularly finance, we want to make sure that both programmatic need, as well as the facility needs are combined. So we're looking at them both holistically. We kicked off this work last year, and I think you'll remember the slide from December, where we took a real comprehensive and intentional approach to start with that needs assessment. Where are our current facilities now? The square footage, the age of the buildings? What is our square footage needs? What are our usage patterns? And then asked Group Four to really do some work on looking at peer comparisons, looking at benchmarks and coming up with particular scenarios that we could consider for potential ways of keeping our facilities up to date, but then also looking at ways to increase our impact. I want to thank everybody who participated in the listening session, in particular, the Board of Trustees that went and met with our communities. We had a listening session at every location. We heard, we had about 70 people attend those listening sessions and were really thoughtful in their approach to sharing with us what they value about the library, what they want us to keep doing and opportunities they saw for us to improve services to them. That was that stakeholder engagement that we really made sure that we led internally. I want to thank our community engagement team that really took the lead in that to make sure that we were taking advantage of, you know, knowing our community in Boise. And I think you'll also remember from December, one of the findings that we had or one of the recommendations that you gave us was, we know how important teen outreach is will be part of this because of how many teens use our libraries. But none of us at the table were teens. So we needed to make sure that we brought in somebody who could do a specific teen outreach. And our community engagement team, I thought, did just an excellent job of being out in the community where teens go to understand how they use the library, what barriers they have towards using the library and what could make them really powerful library users. And then I also really want to thank the community. The things that we heard, the people that took the surveys, people who came to our listening sessions, the people who wrote letters to us have all made our thinking more inclusive and I think a better approach. And I just wanted to pull this quote, because I think this was indicative so much of the feedback that we heard, both in person, online and through letters. I'm grateful for the facilities and the people who staff them. The community links our facilities with our staff and don't see a difference. The library is our people, our people are the library. We heard that over and over again, how important library staff are. They know, when a kid walks in, they know their name. They have a book that they've recommended for them. They're inviting them to a program. That is absolutely appreciated by the community. And then that opportunity for a community space in an increasingly fragmented world also is something that really came through. How important our physical space is in an increasing online society and that opportunity to really connect. And I think that links back to our mission statement and links back to the value and the role that we play in our community. So I'm going to move into the recommendations that I have for discussion today. As Mayor said, I'm sharing these recommendations, looking for alignment and direction. And as I said, my key priorities really are at keeping our current level of service by maintaining our current assets in a resource constrained environment and in a growing city. So that's sort of the, the beginning of where my recommendations start. I'll go. I missed one. I have three recommendations. I think my order is a little different than I'm expecting, but I'll roll with it. They're all in, they, all three recommendations are resource dependent. And that's why I'm so appreciative that Eric will be here with us. He'll help particularly my Board of Trustees understand the process that the city does for its capital budgeting. I think that'll be really important background. So just real briefly, my, the three that I have, I want to invest in the upkeep of our current facilities and service. I want to explore opportunities for expanded reach through innovation, through innovative services and partnerships. And then I do want to plan to increase the square footage that we have for library services. So that first recommendation, which really is the immediate term, starts with investing in our current facilities. And in this, I want to make sure that we schedule and fund replacement cycles for major repair and maintenance of all of our, at all our current locations. So part of the work that Group Four did was to come up with a very long list of all the systems that keep our facilities running. The plumbing, the air, the heat, the fire pumps, our electrical. Much of that, we have a now, we have a real strong list of it. They built this tool that Public Works is going through and actually putting in, okay, what will, you know, in a replacement cycle, if, if your roof is 20 years and this is the year we need to replace it, what should we estimate for the budget? I will be honest, particularly with my Board of Directors for the library. This is important and we're behind because we didn't have this before. I just want to be transparent about that. This is something that I had hoped that we would be able to build on, that that had already existed. We needed to do this work and that work is done, which will allow us for planning. The second thing that I think really came through in what we looked at, our usage patterns, when we looked at, heard from the community, saw where people were going to libraries or people were checking out library books, is how valuable the Lynx Library Consortium is to Boise and to all, actually all the libraries that participate in that consortium. My recommendation is we continue to participate in that because of the value it provides. We are physically constrained in our library spaces. We have about, room for about 325,000 physical books. That Lynx Library Consortium allows users access to more than a million books. And so when we, when you think about, you know, your, your own experience of putting a book on hold next day or the day after, you're able to pick it up at your branch location and you flip it over and you say, wow, this book is, this book came from Eagle or this book came from Nampa. That is because that consortium has really helped our users benefit from access to more materials. And then I also want to make sure that we're looking at renewing the leases at Collister and Hillcrest. The Hillcrest leases set, it ends in July of 2027, which is coming up very quickly. And then Collister in February of 2028. And so in order to not have interrupted services at those two very important branch locations, I want to make sure that we are working to renew those leases. Then I want to make sure that we're exploring innovation and partnership. One of the questions that we had in December that came out of that, our joint work session, is will people travel for services? And we asked that question in our listening sessions. We asked that question in discussions that we had with people and people absolutely will travel. And we see that through usage patterns. If a, if a library has a specific program or a specific amenity, people will travel to that library. And I recommend that we take advantage of that. And the place that I want to look at first is the idea of creating a specific and resource teen space in one of our, one of our locations. This is a very underserved group, in my opinion, from our current facilities. And I think we have two locations, our downtown library and our Hillcrest branch, that have a potential, they've got a space where that teen space could go. They're on a transit corridor, so it may be easier for teens to get to that location. And this is something that I would want to do in partnership with other service providers for teens. Group Four recommended some innovative models for us to look at, because these are things that we haven't, as a system, done previously. And these are considering ways, we can use non-staffed models to allow people to access materials. So in this, when you think about a book kiosk or a vending machine or a way of making it more convenient for people to pick up materials. Those are all things that are, that have not been implemented in Boise, but have certainly been implemented in some of our peer libraries that we have the opportunity to look at. And then I also really want to explore partnerships to expand programs and services from those Lynx libraries. We've had some good experience with that in the last year, in particular with the Thousand Books Before Kindergarten program that we are now jointly implementing with the Meridian District Library and the Ada Community Library. That our libraries care very much about early childhood literacy. And we know how important it is for kids, when they show up at kindergarten, that they're ready to read. So that zero to five is a very important timeframe for us to be working with parents and caregivers. We also know that from zero to five, kids are moving around in the valley a lot. And so by us jointly doing that program, if a kid starts that program at Meridian and then comes to Boise or moves to a different library, we can seamlessly make sure that they are engaged in that program. We've got opportunities to build on that. I'm super excited, too. The, the Lynx Library Consortium has really started to implement more ways that we're working, or trying to identify ways that we can work more in coordination to have more impact. And I think that is something that we should really take advantage of and keep looking at. And then finally, as, as the mayor mentioned, we really do need to determine a strategy for increasing our library space. But that needs to be a process where we budget both to secure, equip and staff additional library space. We've got some innovative models that could be non-staffed. But I know from the listening sessions, from the community input that we have, that link between staff and impact that the community feels and appreciates. We'll need to make sure that those, that that strategy includes both the one-time cost to set, to start something, but, or to add space, but then also really to make sure it has all the components so that it can serve the public. The biggest opportunity that I see for us to look at is the opportunities to co-locate library services with other city services. We are increasingly looking for places where, I think Lindsay talks about stacking value. Are there places where we can look at our spaces as a co-location space? We do this in programs already. We work really closely with our Parks and Rec team. You know, they're doing pop-up services for seniors out of our Cole and Eustick location. We're doing home-based services out of the senior center. But that really is, you know, you know, just at the program level. I think we've got some real opportunities to look at, okay, how would we design a facility that has multiple service points for the community? And then finally, the, the, the biggest learning, the biggest learning that I've had through this process is learning more about Proposition One that was passed by the community in 2019. Learning both the intent behind that, but then also the result of it. It does require voter approval for any library project over $25 million. It is something that we're going to need to make sure that we are factoring into any plan. And it does have some interesting, I would say unintended consequences in terms of the strategy that we use. And it does have some interesting, I would say unintended consequences in terms of the strategy that we used to purchase land for our Cole and Eustick inbound crossing. Held on to that land for a long time, was able to save money to then build on that land and then staff it. That's an option that we no longer have. So we'll need to figure out in an in a new environment with new expectations, how we meet that. So to reiterate, here are the three recommendations that I have for discussion. One last point I want to mention on this is I want to talk about the timeframe. This was a very challenging timeframe or time to actually do some of the work, particularly the work that the Public Works team had to do in terms of forecasting costs and cost escalation. There were, there's just so much change and volatility in the public work sector. Not knowing, should we do a cost escalation of 3%, 8%, 15%, 20%? That was enormously challenging. At the same time, we know our community continues to rapidly evolve. And so my recommendation is that we actually revisit our facility plan every five years as opposed to every 20 years. Not at the same level of engagement, but certainly looking at some of the assumptions that we use to set our direction, to understand if things have changed. I think this will allow us to be more opportunistic. I think this will allow us to be more responsive to the community. And I think it'll allow us, you know, the opportunity, you know, particularly with the work that we've done on understanding our current facilities and that, you know, some of those end of your life of our systems, like how are we doing and keeping those up to date? So that's the last sort of recommendation for implementation I have on that. And at this point, I could answer any questions you may have, or we could ask Eric to talk more about the capital.
I think we pause here and let's have a discussion, then we'll move into Eric with capital.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Maybe just to see if I can get her fighter point on this. So obviously Prop One would make it challenging if we were going to build a new main library because that would cost well over $25 million. What is a branch library these days costing, knowing that the ones that we built in the past were probably a little bit too small? So they might need to be a little bit bigger than that. That's exceeding that $25 million cap as well.
I don't recommend that we build a library under 25,000 square feet. That would allow us the adequate size for our collections, for our population, for the amenities that they that people told us they want to have in the library. That includes meeting space. That includes quiet and spaces for quiet and loud activities. I also know that we have historically built smaller libraries because that's what we could afford. But yes, at the my recommendation at a 25,000 square foot minimum, that would, we believe, particularly when we look at how, as I mentioned, rapidly costs are escalating to, you know, for a standalone library that we purchase and then build a building on and equip it with all the materials, technology. And, you know, the things inside the building to make it a library, that would put us over the 25 million.
Okay. And then the other situation would be if we leased out a facility, and I'm guessing if we leased out a facility, we would also be looking for a certain amount of square footage. I don't know if it's the same, you know, versus if we're buying a piece of property and building one. Where does that fit into Prop One? Are we knocking on the door similar with the tenant improvements? Or are we still below? Where that could be an option where we wouldn't necessarily have to, you know, factor in Prop One?
Councilmember Hallie Burton, when we looked at the length of time we get close to it, you know, if we were to do it today, we might be able to with that square footage and having a lease model because we'd have less upfront costs. But we were surprised how close we were and how rapidly we hit that $25 million because of, you know, we're we don't we don't have anything that we can build today. And the further along that we went in our out-year forecasts, the higher those costs came and the closer we got to the $25 million.
And then just kind of the final question there. So if we were just to use maybe Collister or smallest one? Hillcrest, smallest? Okay, Hillcrest. How many full-time staff do we have at Hillcrest?
Put me on the spot-ish. Thank you. I will take the ish about 11.
11 full-time staff. So if we were looking at an additional location, we're looking probably safe to say somewhere between eight and 15 staff members would be maybe a good assumption.
Correct.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Jessica, I think this is the the tension that I'm in. Is we have a report that show from the consultant that shows that we are severely, well, I shouldn't say severely. We're probably at 70 to 80% of the square footage that we need across the system. And we also have public sentiment that is interested in a new branch library. We also have this ordinance that may make it difficult to navigate a library project that's a branch library. Now, I don't think that when this ordinance was probably considered a branch library was probably considered a major library project, but 40% inflation on construction costs over the last six years has made it so. The 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 thing, the recommendation that I've hung up on is given these constraints, council wants to support the library and having more space. The public wants a new branch. You are recommending 25,000 square feet or more. I I just don't see it in the cards from a cost perspective that the city is going to be able to take on the burden of a 20 to $30 million building. And I think we have a public that is happy with the the types of branches that we are delivering that's below that standard. We have a council that wants to help and provide more square footage. And we want to be responsive to the public. I feel like our the tension here is between doing nothing because the standards that we're setting are cost prohibitive or doing something that could relieve that pressure that might be below the industry best standards that you're recommending. And I I it's important to me to resolve this tension in a way that that meets staff needs, but also meets our desire to help add square footage and meet the demands of the public to consider other branches. So what do I do with that?
Councilmember Nash, I think that is a very good articulation of the challenge that we're here. You know, we have created the branch libraries that are beloved and are under square footage, all four of them. And I think one of the things that we definitely heard in the listening sessions, particularly from people at Hillcrest and Collister was the real challenge of using that facility for the library purposes that we want to have for it. Our our listening session in our the Collister location, I thought was a fantastic example of that. That location, the meeting room is right next to the children's room or the area for children's. You know, it's a one-room library. It has noise problems. We actually couldn't hear each other in the listening session. Not because the children that were right next to that discussion were doing anything egregious. They were just kids that were looking at books. It was just that the the tension of quiet and loud, the not having meeting space, tho- those are the trade-offs that we need to make. I have my recommendation of what I think an adequate branch library for Boise will be. Also recognize the real funding constraints. You know, even if we had the, if we didn't have Prop One, there are real budget constraints. And so there is a a trade-off that we need to make in terms of how do we add square footage? But I think to Councilmember Hallie Burton's, his point also is that a small branch library becomes very expensive in terms of its ongoing costs. And so adding square footage with that additional ongoing cost may, you know, in one way does improve your square footage. But I'm worried that it may not necessarily improve library service in the way that we would hope.
Madam Mayor, Jessica, on this note, one thing I've been thinking about as it relates to the built of the owned libraries, branch libraries that we have is what could have been done when those libraries were built so that we didn't face the type of constraints that we had today. So the report does not recommend, acknowledges the lack of space that we have at those facilities, but does not recommend from a cost value perspective at expanding those facilities. That has me like racking my brain about like, could we annex a space at the on the corner of Cole and Eustick where the where the bank just left? Or could we span into the parking lot and do a trade with the Capital Asian Plaza for more parking space? And as I've been thinking about that, I'm thinking about if we were to ever do a new branch, is there a way that we could do it that's financially realistic today but sets us up for capacity expansion 10 years into the future? Where we could provide a higher level or better level of service at those libraries. So imagine we acquiring a three-acre parcel instead of a one and a half acre parcel and the backside is set aside for future expansion, should we be able to afford it? Have have you with Public Works, the consultant evaluated any concepts like that 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 might be able to give into some of these capacity needs that we may have now or public, public interest that we have now, but maybe in the future allow us to expand in a way that's more conducive to library operations?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, President Nash. Yes, we have been exploring all sorts of opportunities in the background and unfortunately, our current branch locations at Cole and Eustick inbound are pretty landlocked for expansion, which is why that's not in the plan. Certainly always looking for space to expand that would be adjacent, but not connected. Proper is not as efficient as we would want. And I get to your point of like thinking about make building another branch that isn't the accurate size that we're recommending is sort of thinking about a fire station that maybe only has two bays instead of full three, not fully staffed. So I would encourage you guys to think about it as far as I get to look at all the facilities. So I know all of our needs around the city, but really the programmatic pieces that Jessica's alluding to are really vital to have in a branch. So that's why we're ranking the recommendation of the size and we could certainly build something out and leave a portion of it as a shell and come back. There's lots of different ways we can approach that.
I I I did not intend, Madam Mayor, Jessica, I probably didn't intend to be this direct about my goals for for this, but I I just need to stay on the record so that it's clear. There's an election in a month. I may not be on council in a couple of months, so keep that in mind. I think it is unlikely, maybe even like totally not happening that we build a $30 million branch library to address our needs at the leased facilities or a new library branch. And we want to address our needs at the leased facilities or a new branch. And I I just don't think a $30 million library is going to happen. Other council members or the mayor might have different opinions than me. But I mean, if we can get to like a 10 to $15 million range, those start getting more realistic. That's like a pool and we did a couple pools. We can do a capital plan for that. But when we start getting into the $30 million range, we're cutting into, we're severely cutting into other capital priorities. We have 1,500 homeless households in the city. We want to help them. And we want to try to get them out of homelessness as quickly as possible. And when we start eating into like an industry best, eating into that with an industry best library, like we're probably just going to say no. And so I just put it back to, we really want to help, but I I don't think $30 million is 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 reasonable right now.
And I'll jump in here because two things, you said the magic word CIP, which we need to have a discussion about. And also, my goal in this is that staff leave here with a list of directions and in in terms of what to come back to us with for this planning process. So I I I know I want to hear from other council members. I'd like to get Eric to jump in on the discussion. I'm I'm taking, kind of keeping track of recommendations and other things that have come up and this kind of 10 to $15 million request is now on the list. We'll hear from Eric in terms of what the CIP looks like. My intention would be that Jessica and team would come back at a directed time responsive to your requests today with both the responses for to your requests as it relates to policies, citing facilities, maintenance and operation, those different things that Jessica has on her list as well, innovation, co-location. And then Eric come alongside her to help guide us through that planning process from a capital perspective. But also have on this list, the staffing piece that needs to go hand in hand with that discussion in terms of budgets.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of the board. Happy to be here with you this afternoon. I'm going to go through really how the city funds capital projects. And I have a handful of grounding slides and I'll get into a little bit more detail. From a grounding perspective, just a high-level overview of the city's funds. I apologize, the colors don't translate very well in this room.
They really don't.
They looked much better on this.
I thought it was my glasses, but it's not.
No. Yeah. I'll start on the left-hand side. You can see that the first upper-left box just says governmental funds. And underneath our governmental funds, we have two categories and that's where the principal focus is going to be this afternoon. We have our general fund and we have our capital fund. And the reason we have those called out is within the general fund is where we account for operating expenses. And then within the capital fund, we obviously account for capital expenses. Both of those are supported primarily from taxpayer resources. Property tax, sales tax, liquor tax and department revenue being the foremost categories. On the right-hand side, we have enterprise funds, things like our airport, geothermal, water renewal and solid waste. We have a special revenue category and that's where housing would be accounted for. And then we have our internal service funds. Again, I'm going to be focusing on capital. Capital again rolling up under governmental funds. That's where we account for our general government services. You can think about things like police, fire, parks and library within that category. A high-level overview in terms of physical infrastructure, daily business in city, what do we account for in each of these funds? So within the capital fund, we do account for our infrastructure projects, things like construction of new facilities, but we also account for things like major renovations, replacement of our infrastructure and major equipment. When I talk about major equipment, one of the primary things we can think about are police and fire vehicles. We can also think within that category, new parks and then major repairs and maintenance projects. There's been a lot of discussion at the library board about major repairs at the main library. We can also think about things like the green belt roofs at various city facilities, the whole gamut of major repairs. Again, funded out of the general fund. The capital fund receives an annual transfer from the general fund. And I'll get into that in a little in a little bit. But, you know, the primary revenue stream within the general fund is property taxes. Also, we account for capital projects through impact fees. There are certain categories, police, fire and parks, where we can assess development impact fees to aid in capital construction. We have certain franchise fees which are dedicated towards our capital fund and then cash or or fund balance that we accumulate and. and then cash or, or fund balance, uh, that we accumulate in prior years as we save for projects, uh, can be used. The general fund, uh, accounts for the daily business of the city. Um, you can think about staffing, uh, city programs and services, supplies, fuel, insurance, things like that. Um, we also account for things like our water and custodial costs, fuel, and then just all of the, uh, the various back of house support, uh, uh, for our various facilities. Um, same revenue stream, property tax, sales tax and liquor tax go into that as well as department revenue. A high level overview as to how the capital budget is, uh, developed. There are, uh, a wide number of, uh, sources for the identification of capital projects, facility assessments, technology plans, various department, uh, strategic plans. We have, uh, fleet replacement schedules, um, among others. Uh, we go through an annual process to prioritize, uh, the needs. And there is consideration given to health and safety concerns, condition assessments and when we think, uh, will reach, uh, the end of the useful life of various facility or asset. Regulatory requirements, uh, strategic alignment or alignment with, uh, mayor and council goals. Um, city growth. So as we, uh, expand and population expand in size, we need to provide services and then, uh, staff capacity. So as part of the annual budget, we bring all that together, also considering, uh, mayor and city council priorities, community needs and equity across the organization or excuse me, across the, uh, entire city. Um, and then we also, uh, have to keep in mind what we can actually afford. Uh, we are bound to have a, uh, balanced general fund budget. We, uh, very much seek to align one-time revenues with one-time costs, ongoing revenues with ongoing costs. So each spring we bring forward, uh, recommended capital investments, uh, to the mayor and city council for their consideration as part of the annual budget. Boy, these colors really aren't working. I apologize for that. Um, so we, we do have a, uh, structural imbalance within the capital fund. So, uh, on the right-hand side of that scale, you can see the expenditure categories that we have. We have, uh, our projects, uh, things like new facilities, uh, major technological, uh, investments, things like that. But then we also have annual allocations for major repairs and maintenance, uh, and major equipment. The cost of those three things, uh, combined exceeds the, uh, annual revenues that we, uh, account for within the capital fund. Within the capital fund, we have franchise fees, development impact fees, general fund transfers. So we are, uh, very much in a resource constrained environment within, uh, the capital fund. Over the last couple of years, we have, uh, worked to improve our situation. We have been increasing the annual transfer from the general fund into the capital fund. Over the last two years, um, our base or ongoing transfer has increased by, uh, nearly $3 million and we've also done, uh, numerous one-time, uh, transfers. The contributions as, as stated previously are behind, uh, projected major repairs and maintenance and major equipment costs. We do on an annual basis aim to prioritize our major repairs and maintenance. Uh, from a cost perspective, uh, that is advantageous. It prevents costly failure, failures and extends the, the life of our assets. Uh, I spoke to that, that top bullet in terms of, uh, allocating more funding. Um, we have seen an increased number of facilities to maintain. That's been a contributing factor to that. It's not only cost growth, but as we've added more parks across the city, more facilities, public safety facilities, uh, arts and history facilities, we, we need to ensure that we're maintaining them. We have a growing backlog of repair projects. Uh, we have very much been focusing on ensuring that we are, um, identifying uh, proactively our needs to, uh, maximize, uh, city resources. Um, and, you know, due to the, the size and scale of some of these projects, we can't address them all, uh, all at once. Uh, we have, uh, made sizable investments, um, in areas like the green belt. So as part of the fiscal year 26 budget, we allocated, uh, considerable resources to that. And we foresee doing that into the future. Um, we're also looking at, uh, rapid cost escalation. Lindsay spoke to that a, a little bit. We're seeing, um, you know, just tremendous rates of growth. Uh, and when we consider the fact that our, um, uh, revenues within the general fund are constrained. Um, we have a limitation of 3% for property taxes. Um, many of our other revenue, uh, categories are also constrained. Uh, we have attention there. Uh, we do have development impact fees that can be used for certain projects within the capital fund. Uh, but they can't be used for all projects. Uh, first, they can only be used for, um, certain, uh, police, fire and parks projects. So we couldn't use them for, uh, information technology projects, for certain transportation projects, for library projects. We are bound by, uh, state code for what we can assess impact fees for. Um, and we cannot use our impact fees for replacement and maintenance projects. So as I spoke about the growing backlog, uh, across the organization of maintenance needs, uh, development impact fees are not an allowable, uh, funding source for that. I'm going to do an overview, uh, at a high level of, uh, the capital fund for fiscal year 26, the year we just began, uh, approximately a week and a half ago. Just to provide, uh, a flavor as to how our resources are allocated. Um, we have a $46 million budget within the capital fund, uh, this year. Approximately half of that is for capital projects, uh, that are tax-supported. Um, and three of the, the significant ones are Whitney Pool, uh, various technology systems and repairs at the Boise Depot. We have, um, other capital projects that are supported from, um, other sources, primarily development impact fees, uh, at just over $5 million. You can see we have over $10 million, uh, allocated for major repairs and maintenance this year. That's, uh, a pretty steep increase from where we've been, uh, in recent years. And we foresee, uh, that need continuing into the future. Major equipment at about, uh, $10 million, that's primarily for, uh, fire engines, fire trucks and, uh, police vehicles. And then we have, uh, a percent for art allocation where 1.25% of uh, our capital costs need to be dedicated towards public, uh, public art. If we look forward to the next four years, um, we have, you know, many of our needs already, uh, programmed. Uh, we have, uh, fire trucks is a significant need. Um, and the cost for those, uh, you know, are, are significant. Uh, one to $2 million depending on if it's a, a truck or an engine. We have, uh, our enterprise resource planning, uh, system, uh, known as ERP. That's effectively the financial backbone for how we operate, uh, uh, day to day. We have parks, impact fee projects, certain, uh, pathway projects that are, that are programmed, police technology, uh, and ensuring that, uh, our police partners have the, the tools that they need. Some structural rehabilitation of the city hall, uh, uh, parking garage. And then we have numerous playground replacements. I'm going to now focus in a little bit on, uh, project timing. Um, and kind of a formula to think about is, uh, various competing needs across the organization plus rising costs, plus, uh, funding, funding constraints, excuse me, equals extended planning cycles.
But Eric, I want to say here, I'm just going to cut in. I mean, this is, this is normal. So, I mean, I'd like to use the pools as an example. Those pools have been under discussion and under planning for 10 years. The, the costs escalated in the last five, but we were talking about the Whitney and, and Lowell Pools in 2015 and, and beyond. So, um, the planning cycles are extended, which is why it's so important. I just want to context that, why it's so important that we move the library cycle into the planning cycles as well, so that we make sure that anything that we want to do can get done.
Absolutely. Thank, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. And I'm going to go into another specific example of kind of the, the planning cycle, the normal planning cycle, uh, in just a moment.
Eric, it's good to have you back. You read the room so well. Madam Mayor, may I ask a question? Um, Eric, thank you so much, uh, and I really appreciate this. And I know that we've had a lot of questions about the capital fund. Last budget cycle, as we were trying to figure out what that looked like. I'm curious, with your experience, what kind of projects have we been able to complete between the 10 and $15 million range within the last five years? What, what does that look like? Help us, help us visualize that.
Well, and actually I'm going to jump in here because I, I think that the fire station is a perfect, um, example of that. Because the process doesn't start in that five to 10-year window. It started before that and then you finish in the last five years with a 10 to $20 million project.
Uh, Madam Mayor, thank you for that. Uh, that would be a, a good example. Uh, we have, uh, the Warm Springs Golf Course, uh, Clubhouse, the Grill and Golf Facility. Um, we have.
I'd say that's a little different because we had a $10 million donor show up.
That, that is, that is correct. There is, there's. Thank, thank you, Mayor. There, there's various funding streams to, to consider for all of these different projects. The pools are, I guess, another, another good example for a project within that range. Um, as we're thinking about, uh, our projects, it's not just the capital cost that we need to consider. We also need to consider the cost to operate them. Uh, you know, it's very important that as we, uh, think ahead, that we not only can have the facility itself, but all the people, uh, to service the community. We have been prioritizing major repairs and maintenance and major equipment. And we do take a multi-year view, uh, so we have a five and a 10-year plan. Um, and we oftentimes are saving for projects, uh, knowing that it might take a, you know, some time in order for us to, uh, be able to, uh, to execute. We have had some recent examples of projects that take many years to move from concept to execution to opening the Northwest Station, the Warm Springs Grill and Golf, Whitney and Lowell Pools. Uh, planning for these facilities, uh, took well over a decade. I'll go into the Northwest Station in a moment and that was, uh, north of that. Uh, in order to do this, there's a careful balancing of donations and impact fees, uh, tax resources for the facility costs as well as general fund resources, uh, which account for the operating costs in order to make them a reality. Uh, the challenge of finding operating, the funding for the operating costs is, uh, usually the more significant challenge due to the fact that we need to have those costs, uh, each and every year. Um, and we do aim to ensure that the operating costs are fully accounted, uh, so as not to erode service levels in other facilities. Um, we want it to be additive as opposed to, uh, redistributed. So as we look at Fire Station 13, uh, did kind of an overview over the last week or two on this one. By all accounts, the first re- record that I could find of the need of being identified was approximately, uh, 25 years ago. Um, in, right around 2000. That project was, uh, incorporated into the development impact fee plan in 2016. It was incorporated into the general fund forecast for the operating costs in 2018. And what that means is that each year as part of the, uh, budget process, as we're assessing, how much might be available for, uh, current needs. We were, uh, effectively banking the operating cost, knowing that they were going to come online. Um, you know, at some point in the future. We started seeking budget approval for this project for the design in, uh, 2020. We had land purchased in 2022. And just this past summer, we saw, uh, the facility open. So you can see approximately a 25-year, uh, cycle for, uh, that, that particular fire station in the time it was identified to opening.
Madam Mayor, Eric, thank you. This is so helpful. Um. Uh, what, like, when would we need to start if we wanted to have a goal of like 2027? Like if we wanted to do something with the libraries, with the facilities plan, and we wanted to do that, like beginning that within 2027, like walk us through the timeline. I mean, and also I just want to say Jimmy Halliburton wasn't here in 2000. That's why that changed.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, Lucy, could you clarify your question? Do you mean integrate it into the capital plan or build something?
Yeah. I want you to breathe, Eric. Integrated into the plan.
Oh, wait. So I want to clarify. So you're asking what we need to do to put something onto the plan starting in 27? Not that it would be opened in 2027. Okay. Everyone, I'll start to breathe again.
Everyone breathe, everyone breathe. We're just talking about a plan.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, one more clarifying question. Fiscal year 2027. So like if we're.
What we're about to work on.
Yeah. So like when we're incorporating things into next year's plan, like when would the library board and council need to make decisions, um, to incorporate something next year? Like how late is too late?
Uh, Madam Mayor, council members, uh, now is a good time to start, uh, these discussions. Um, the budget process in earnest really begins at the beginning of the calendar year. I will say that, um, you know, there is a prioritization that, that will be occurred, that will be required for any project that, that needs to be, um, accounted for. In the case of the nor- this Fire Station 13, it took many years for it to actually, uh, materialize, not only from a, you know, a city council directive perspective, but also, you know, from a, just a prioritization, considering all the other needs, uh, that the organization was trying to fund. Um, so, you know, if council were to give direction for us to consider that, we would put it in the mix with all the other projects. And as we're bringing various considerations to council, uh, yeah, as part of the upcoming budget cycle, we could at least speak to the project.
Madam Mayor, if I can just add one piece, I think the other challenge, uh, we have is the maintenance of the current facilities is also not accounted for in that capital plan.
Yeah, I mean, i- in my, I, I want to follow up on this. The, I mean, what I would anticipate is that, um, when Jessica comes back with responses to the requests today, Eric comes back and we start that CIP discussion. Um, but in that would be multiple things on the table. There's the maintenance of, maintenance and operations that she flagged that hasn't been accounted for historically in the CIP. There's the, um, costs associated with any growth of existing facilities or future branches that would need to be discussed. So all of that, we begin to discuss in the budget cycle when we look at the CIP list of things that extend for many years. Yes.
Madam Mayor, um, can someone speak to the, the operating? I mean, if we were to add anything in terms of new facilities, how do you incorporate that or plan to incorporate the operating expenses, which are not insignificant to, to, to do any new facility?
I'll look to Eric for this one.
Sure. Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, council member, board member. Um, as we look at that, uh, really it's, uh, there, there's an art to finding, uh, alignment between the operating budget and the capital budget. So as, um, we're going through the annual budget cycle and as we're evaluating needs, both for the, you know, the most, uh, pertinent year that we're looking at, the upcoming year, but also looking at the 10-year cycle, we are really trying to align when we will have the operating costs and when we will have the, the, the capital costs. And it's looking at that at the same time as we're considering all the other needs that the organization is trying to, uh, trying to fund. Um, so it, it really is a constant, um, balancing act as you try and find, align those two things. I would say that in order for us to dedicate funding within our general fund forecast and hold those resources, we have to have firm direction that the, that the facility is actually intended to be open. So there needs to be a, um, a stated, uh, direction. This, this project or this is the goal. And then we will aim to find the operating and the capital resources for that in consideration of all the other.
Use this as an example. So the budget, the first budget approval was in 2020 for the facility, correct? Because then you started planning the design for the facility. So where in the budget, where in the budgeting process then did you account for the, the three shifts of firefighters that would need to go in the building once it opened in 2025?
Madam Mayor, uh, for this particular one, it was 2018. I would say that that was a little bit late.
So that's where they incorporate into the general fund forecast even before we approved. So that's where they incorporate into the general fund forecast, even before we approved, yes, go design things. You'd begun incorporating the, the costs of people that we would start spending in 2025. So seven years in advance.
That is correct. And the reason that I put it in at that point was because council had approved the Capital Improvement Plan through the Development Impact Fee update in 2016.
So ultimately, for the 2025 opening, the fire station is, in this example, which is real, was incorporated into the CIP in 2016. Two years later, those three shifts of people, plus all the ancillary operating costs were incorporated into the forecasting for general fund budgets.
That is correct.
Madam Mayor, Eric, quick question on budgeting for capital by departments. Are departments with their budget supposed to be including all of the capital budget improvements to buildings which fall under their operations? For example, the libraries looking at what's needed maybe for a new roof or air handlers? Would that be the same with the fire department looking at their facilities as well and parks?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, the answer to that would be yes. So as we are developing each year's budget, we are working very closely with Lindsay and her team and working to forecast what the needs are going to be to maintain all of those facilities. And I very much appreciate all the work that went into the report that I have in front of me that outline the costs for certain facilities. We didn't have those ones built in prior to this. So that will be an added cost pressure when we're developing the, the five-year plan for next year.
Great. You can go to the summary.
Thank you very much. Just at a high level, you know, the rapid cost escalation and the growing maintenance backlog have challenged our ability to add new capital assets. The recurring capital costs, the major repairs and maintenance, the major equipment exceed our general fund transfer despite recent investments. The operating costs is a significant challenge in identifying resources to, to operate our, our new facilities. And really, the result of that is just a protracted planning cycle between concept, execution, and completion.
And thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
When I think about the capital costs, it's staggering. And for the repairs and maintenance, I think what's unique with the library that we might want to, we have an opportunity versus a fire station or a pool are very specific. Pool is a pool and needs to be underground. Fire station have very specific needs for their buildings. Will we take a look at the libraries and consider our lease options for Hillcrest that we have today in Colister? And looking at, since these leases are coming up here soon, what can we do to take a look at? My recommendation be to go to take a market review of those leases and see what else is available. Maybe that's a little larger, maybe not quite the 25,000 square feet. Maybe if we did 18,000, that'd be twice as much space as that we have at Hillcrest. When I think about adding like a teen space to Hillcrest, I'm not quite even sure where we would add that at. I love the idea of having a teen space there. But I think we need to take a look at, it's a great opportunity as we see a lot of commercial retail space out there to see what we can do to maybe optimize that without indebted the city into a long-term capital plan.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
And we have our consultant recommendations as well. So we've got a couple more things to go through here. I'll keep it quick. So for things with the budget, there are other funding opportunities for a library that exists through our Library Foundation and the Friends of the Boise Public Library and donors and other things. And there's potential for collaboration to get something like this done and maybe a unique way that we haven't done before. So I think that, like, honestly, I'm not as like scared about the capital cost of actually building one because there's opportunities to do it. I am very concerned about general cost of how do we actually staff it? When we have staffing that's also needed for, for person staffing at fire stations, other public safety things, parks and rec, you know, all these other places that we need. So I think what would be helpful for council with budget is to know what some of our staffing plan is going to be going forward across the city. And where we know that we're going to have to be making investments in staffing. And then also knowing if we were to open a new branch, how many staffing that would take, how much it would cost. If we were going to expand in another way, if we're going to expand the downtown library, how much that would cost so that we can know how we can begin planning for that going forward. Because realistically, if we don't know what the plan is, we can't necessarily figure out how many staff it's going to take and what other staff we can't be pushing in different directions and different departments. So it would be helpful to know a staffing plan for the city of our future known needed positions, as well as what it would take for a library. And I'm just going to be very blunt right now. I think that we need a new downtown library. I think everybody thinks we need a new downtown library because we continue to invest a ton of funds in there. And we probably need a branch library somewhere else. But we also need to figure out which one of those may come first so that we can figure out what the staffing plan is going to be for that. Because again, I think that there are funds available in other areas to be fundraised to cover some capital costs. But there isn't any other funds besides, you know, what we're getting in the general fund every single year for staff. So until we know which one of those directions we're going to go, we can't plan for it. And so that's, I think, where I'm hoping to find is like, we know that these two things need to be done. There probably needs to be another branch, maybe two. We know that there needs to be a new downtown library. Which one is going to happen first? So we can plan for it. Which one makes sense to happen first?
I appreciate that. And what I would say, I mean, for Jessica's purposes, one of the things that I would expect that you would return with is, okay, what, what the staffing needs would be. And then in our budget process, when we're talking about all the different things and we're looking forward, then we have the discussion about, okay, depending on where library facilities go, there's this many people timed here. Councilmember Morales and others have asked about the policy in terms of police officers per thousand people. What that means long term, we're going to see a police department strategic plan. We've got four-person staffing. So yes, in that budget process, not only in the immediate year that we have, but we would be looking forward in terms of where we expect we'd need to be adding staff. But to the point of the facilities, and then we should hear from the consultant. The golf and grill is an example here. It was on the list for a long time of things we'd like to do. It got bumped, got bumped, got bumped because there wasn't funding, but it was in the CIP. And then because it was in the CIP, we were able to pivot when an opportunity came. But back to Councilmember Corliss's point, there's maintenance and operations that has to be built into the CIP as well. We're getting to the point where facilities, the leases will need to be renewed. We need to take a look at that. Appreciate your suggestion that we look around, that current facilities have maintenance repairs and operations. So all of that, when you come back, will be some of that parallel process of some follow-up from discussion today with more solidified recommendations and next steps, and then that CIP process where we could build everything in. And now, we should hear from, what are you pointing at?
Madam Mayor, she's online.
Oh, she's online. Oh, you're pointing at the TV. Okay. All right. Sorry. I'm sorry, Jill. Oh, there. Great. Welcome.
Thank you.
I'll have you, Jill, I don't know if you can see us, this is Lauren McLean. I'll, I think that we've read the report. So for purposes of time, I think it best that council have the opportunity to react to it, ask any questions they might have before we move back into me delineating the notes that I've taken and recommendations that would come from council on next steps. That works.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Jill, I think this might be helpful to Councilmember Corliss's question. One thing that I think was probably most shocking to me in your report, I had kind of looked at leased opportunities as like a saving grace to avoid this difficult capital conversation. But it seemed like in your report, the cost for tenant improvements at a leased facility was about two-thirds of what they were for building a new facility. Could you speak to that? And kind of the ballpark figures that you had for like costs for per square foot for new and leased facilities?
Yes, happy to do that. And I, had I known how big I was going to appear on these screens, I might have advocated for being there in person. I'm so sorry that this is uncomfortably large. Yes, leased facilities are one of the things that we looked at. We also looked at other solutions like, you know, can we adopt a vacant retail building, a grocery store, a drugstore, or President Nash, you mentioned, I think, a vacant bank? All of those kinds of things have costs associated with them. Our cost consultant that we worked with on this project and that Lindsay Urb and her team validated through other projects that the city has been working on, found that new construction is, you know, somewhere between $800 and $1,000 a square foot, which is a huge number, but not unusual. For for leased space where we don't know what it is, we don't know what it looks like. It's hard to say exactly what it's going to be. But fitting it out for library space with the partitions that are going to be needed to create the meeting space, the group study rooms, the wonderful children's area, all of the things that the community said that they love about the library and want more of. We didn't want to put a budget in there that wasn't enough to achieve all of those things. So depending on the lease space you find, it may be possible to do it for less.
But could you, Madam Mayor, Jill, could you speak to those cost estimates that you provided in your report for the leased facilities? You said 800 to 1,000 square foot for a new build. My recollection that it was $20 million for a 25,000 square foot leased facility and $30 million for a new build.
Yes, I'm looking at the appendix that we had, and it was 25 to 30,000 square foot branch at 20 to 25 million dollars each. And that's including a project cost. So rolling in some, some soft costs from the city. You know, contingencies, a little bit of escalation, all of that.
Madam Mayor, Jill, this is Kathy. Appreciate the report. Thank you very much. And thank you for taking time to attend today and answer questions. Can you walk through the cost per square foot for a leased facility? And what are some of the big factors you find in that when you're doing a remodel?
Some of the, you caught me off guard. I don't have the actual dollars per square foot here in front of me. Some of the factors are going to be how much space you're adapting, how big the lease space is. Like I said, how much fitting out of the space you're going to, you're going to want and need to do to make it function well as a library. How much shelving and furniture will be needed to fit it out to be a pleasant welcoming space with places for people to sit? Desks.
Madam Mayor, I just want to interject. So I think maybe President Nash, you're referring to some of the estimates we provided in the board slideshow that might not be in the appendix quite yet as far as cost per square foot. And so what we presented last month at the board was approximately $425 per square foot, which is about half of a new build. And in our cost, we were providing cost for collection, furniture, fixture, equipment, so that we could sort of have all of that operational costs in there. And I know that the 425 was a sticker shock, but to Jill's point, you know, accounting for all the amenities that come with a library and the services we provide, that's sort of what bumps up that premium for costs.
Madam Mayor, Lindsay, could you speak to Public Works and the library's position on leased facilities in general? Kind of when I was, over the years, I've kind of been real supportive of it since those leases are so cheap relative to the cost to build. But it seems like that might not be the only factor in consideration, cost in considering leased versus owned facilities.
Sure. Madam Mayor, President Nash, yeah, when we're looking at leased options versus owned options, ideally, we're owning the facilities. When we are trying to renovate a leased space, we're working with the property manager. So there's a lot of limitations in what we can do and what we can provide. A library space is pretty unique in that we want a lot of access to daylight. We want a lot of accessible parking for folks to come in. I'm not exactly sure if you're looking for something more specific. Can you elaborate on that?
I, I think what I'm getting at is if in the future, the board and council were to identify a viable alternative to building a facility, what would be the reaction of staff? For a leased facility versus a, a new facility? Would, would there be a negative reaction from staff regarding a leased facility?
From public work staff?
And library.
No, I don't necessarily think so. I mean, I think everyone wants a brand new shiny something, but a leased is a really sustainable and repurposing an existing facility is a really sustainable approach. So I don't think that persona is a negative one.
Madam Mayor, I have another question for Lindsay that Councilmember Corliss asked earlier today. I think in the last meeting, I was a little surprised to learn that as tenants at those facilities, we, we probably have different responsibilities related to major repairs and maintenance at, at either facility. And maybe relative to maybe a standard residential tenant, when you call your landlord because your toilet's clogged. Could you, could you speak to those? And Councilmember Corliss might have a follow-up to that.
Sure. Madam Mayor, President Nash, yes, the onus is always on the city of Boise if it's over, above, and beyond. Repair is very different than a residential lease or rental agreement. And we have a Don in our office who is our strategic real estate manager. And he isn't here, but I know in talking to him that in our two facilities, Colister and Hillcrest, it's very limiting. And I'm sure Jessica can speak to that as well. But yeah, the onus is always on the city as far as major repairs and improvements. While we have Jill with us, is there anything more for Jill? Thank you, Jill. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I would like, now in the time that we have left, I'm, I'm going to walk through some of what I've heard is being discussed as part of what needs to come back to us. And then would like to hear from council what more. Jessica, and I'd like your nod off on these things. Jessica proposed that we build into our planning process a look at the facilities plan every five years rather than waiting for the 20 to give us some agility. We have, Council President suggested and would like to see, you know, what we can have, staffing aside, but from a capital perspective, what we could have for $10 million-ish. And if that's not even the basic, then what, then, then what would be next? We've got a need to see the care for our current facilities in the CIP. So management not, repairs and maintenance, sorry, I did M and O, repairs and maintenance of current facilities in the CIP. I had some things under here for, that I would classify as run the business, a decision on the leases that we currently have. And the recommendation is that we renew. The, a recommendation that we incorporate teen space somewhere that we, we continue with and expand the partnership with the link system. The, a directive and desire that we be innovative. So we look at co-location on spaces, innovative ways to provide service beyond the facilities that we have, as well as partnerships that would further our impact sooner than later. Related to space, I'm going to repeat myself here. We both have to review leases for the current facilities and determine whether or not we would renew them. And then there's a desire to see when Jessica comes back with the final list of requests, staffing that's alongside that. So I imagine the capital costs for various different scenarios that we request, the CIP process that would work in parallel with that, as well as kind of the staffing realities of anything new. And I would like to build in there as well, the staffing needs in our current facilities, especially if we find, if there are areas where we know that we're at reduced hours and we need to see that expanded. And I go, oh, yes, Chairman.
Madam Mayor, may I also suggest the, the, if it isn't part of the capital expense, the cost of all of the materials and technology that need to go into any new space, whether we're talking about leased, even expanded existing leases, or, I mean, or, or clearly a new standalone building. Those, those are real costs that have to be taken into account. And I'm not sure how they're managed in terms of the budgeting process, whether it's part of capital, all of those books and materials, or whether they're, it's part of, oh, we, I just not understanding it.
Yeah, that's, that does need to be included.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, for, I'll go from Halliburton to Corliss.
Perfect. Yeah, I'm sure everyone's got something if we want to go around the circle.
Have I missed you? I'm sorry. I haven't noticed. I'm sorry, I haven't noticed you. Okay, great.
So first of all, yes, to the things that are on there, a big yes to looking at the teen center in those spaces. That makes a lot of sense and it fits in with the youth road map that we're working on as well. So thank you for the work there. There's a map that I think I would like to see potentially look a little bit different. We've got this map that says if you're within three miles to a library, and it is helpful to see who's in service or who's out of service. But if I live in Southeast Boise, or if I live in East Boise, I hop on the green belt. I can get to the Bound Library three miles very, very easily, very, very quickly on a bike or walking. And that's a heck of a lot different than if I'm in West Boise, riding my bike or walking on Emerald or Eustick or Fairview. And so I know that like the goal is to try to make sure that we're looking at this in an equitable way, but I don't know that the actual distance is, is entirely equitable. If we think about how youth and teens specifically are using our libraries, because I don't think that they're always getting there by car. And a three mile walk or a three mile ride in some parts of town is a lot different than a lot of other parts of town. And if I, if I were to guess, I would say that if you lived in West Boise, that three miles is going to seem a little bit further than it does. For me, from my house, which is about three miles to the Colister Library. So I think that that would be, there's, there's got to be some technology out there that can help us refine that or think about that in just a little bit more of a grandular way.
If I could condense that criteria for, for policy goals and then criteria to meet that policy as it relates to access.
That's correct, because I think
Almost like our ten minute walk to the park.
Because I do think that we look at, yeah, and maybe it's a fifteen minute bike ride or a ten minute, whatever. I don't know. It's not a ten minute walk to a library. That's, that's a lot of libraries. But I I know that when we look at it now, we show that there's some gaps in West Boise. We see some gaps in Southeast Boise. I think they look larger in Southeast Boise based off those masks, but I don't know if that's entirely accurate based off of how people are walking and getting around and how safe the roads are in a particular neighborhood. And I think if we'd looked at that, the map might look a little bit differently. So that's one thing. The other thing that I'm just going to say is that I can think of what a future vision for libraries look like in Boise. If I had all the money in the world and it's probably two more branch libraries, it's probably moving out of our two lease spaces and getting those into their own branches. And it's redoing the downtown library. And that's probably bringing us close to our marker of the area served. And so if we know that that's kind of our hope and goal and dream, then I think what I could really use some help with is which one is the priority and which one's going to come first. In my mind, we need a branch library and a downtown library. And it probably makes sense to get a branch library first because if we're going to do construction on the downtown library, we're going to have to spread resources somewhere else. But if we could know what the priority is on those sort of known projects, then we also have the ability to say, hey, voters, we are, think that the top priority is a library in West Boise, or we think the top priority is a library in Southeast or the main library. This is going to be on the ballot this year and we can start working on those efforts to open those opportunities. But until we figure out which one of those projects we want to start on first, or at least which one we think that we want to start on first, then I don't know what we can do with, with Prop One. So to me, I feel like unless our legal can give me a different interpretation of how we navigate Prop One, it's figuring out which one we're going to do first. And then making sure that we start moving in that direction. So that's where, I don't know that that's something that you can come back to me with. That's what I would like to see. And you know, my preference is getting one of those branches and then getting the main library done.
Yeah, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'm glad we were going through this exercise. It's, it's really a lot, a lot of costs involved and a lot of different ways we can take a look at this. I think, as I mentioned before, with the two leases coming up, Hillcrest in twenty twenty-seven and Colister in twenty twenty-eight, I think this could be an opportunity, especially Hillcrest is, I know we've done a lot of work there and we put a lot of money in there. But I think it's, out of fairness, we should go to the market and see what else is out there for a bigger lease space, somewhere between maybe ten and eighteen thousand. With that, even with the costs, it'll keep us, you know, probably somewhere between six and eight million, back of the napkin or back of the iPhone calculation here. So I think that's one opportunity to take a look at. I think, Jimmy's right, we do need to look at how do we start prioritizing these? How do we build on all the costs? One of the other things I wanted to address that we haven't brought up yet is, that was in the report, was looking at key, some kiosk centers, non-staffed, non-staffed kiosk centers. I think that's a great idea. I think especially thinking about Whitney Pool coming up and how could we integrate maybe a kiosk or something there in the summers when it's open? Maybe some of our community centers at our schools? And maybe come back with maybe one or two recommendations on what we think could be feasible there or on already city-owned property. Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, I think that we're on the right track here. I appreciate every, all the work that's been done to get us here and the comments by council so far, I think, are fully aligned with. I think that we, you know, this might be a twenty-year plan and I, and in making the decision on where a library should be, or I'd, I'd want the staff to propose criteria that supports our city's land use planning and service goals. I think we have some space in kind of affirming what that criteria could, should be in making those decisions. But immediately I'm thinking that we need to look for space around activity centers that were, that is on, you know, in transit corridors. And I guess it would be my, if I were to wave the magic wand on prioritization, I would first want to be sure that we're taking care of our ongoing costs and the cost maintenance, operations, staffing, and an annual ongoing budget to care for what we have and who supports those spaces. And then I am, I agree that downtown library needs some attention as we continue to fund improvements there. Is, is that, does that, you know, does expanding the downtown library or getting it to be the next twenty years of the downtown library and beyond, is that a move? Is that, I appreciated the suggestion about moving the administrative offices out of there. I know the city has properties and as we've, we maybe can't purchase a property with the library in mind without a vote. But I know that there are current properties that we own that maybe we could consider for the office space to, because I think that, to your point, that's kind of a quick expansion right there of the downtown library. But then also a new branch, I love the community engagement that we've seen on the desire for a West Boise library branch. And I want to support that community engagement. And I'd like to make that, I'd like to affirm that direction with some sort of criteria that I'm hoping the staff can bring back to us, and that's the land use, also service goals, things like that. And I agree with Council President Nash that I think my guy is saying that that would, that an additional branch would likely be a leased space at this point. But those would be my three priorities that I think we should be building towards. Maybe it's, maybe it's twenty or thirty years to get all of that done. But I would love us to be working towards those goals of, you know, making sure the library has what they need now to be successful year to year. And then the downtown library and, and a new branch, hopefully in West, hopefully we can determine some criteria that would support that West Boise desire.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Director Door, thank you so much. As I've reviewed the facilities plan, I just keep thinking about good, better and best. And I appreciate all the work that went into gauging the community's love for its libraries, the services we do use and the gaps that we have at certain branches or in certain areas to get the best. And so I appreciate that, that, that best has kind of been outlined. And as some of my council colleagues have, have also shared today, you know, I am struggling with seeing how we, we get the best and, and we want it. I, I think about, you know, before I started a family, I'm sure I wanted that, you know, four bedroom, three bath condo downtown. But we got to start in the, the, you know, sub-six hundred square foot apartment, right? And so I think that as we're a growing city, specifically, as I'm thinking about areas like West Boise, which I spent some of my childhood in, that, you know, this, that we're a growing city and there's probably an opportunity to consider what a good branch library could look like and then could grow as that area continues to grow. We, we continue to see infill in these areas and redevelopment. My expectation would be that a new branch library would be accompanied by a look at how that is making wherever it lands an activity center. That's likely not an activity center now. And how that changes the way that we might want that area to, to grow, to allow more people access to this, this great resource. And so I would like to see a runway and runways can be long as we've, we've learned today. Fire was a great example of that towards where, how, how we get there. And I think, you know, Fire is a good example as well when we think about the best, the new stations that we brought online, bringing them online with four-person staffing, right? The, providing the safety for, for firefighters and better response for residents. And so there is value in, in considering where that, you know, where on that spectrum we are. And so the slides were mentioned from the last meeting that went through the different costs of leased and owned. And being able to get that good, better, best variance on those and seeing, you know, how does the staffing change between those? I, I really am interested in seeing. And I think that it was important also to show the escalation rate that those projects, just so that we can see how long the runway is and what that impact is on the, on the cost of the project. So I, I, I like those slides and I'm interested in seeing what those look like, kind of at those varying levels as Madam Mayor mentioned. And I think just one, a couple other quick thoughts. Also, when we're considering these costs, considering the escalation cost for a digital collection. And just I, you know, that was kind of scary when we learned about that a couple of years ago. My wife was like queuing up holds the other day and I'm like, uh, 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 you know, and so understanding how, how that growth is, is also going to impact us in a different way. You know, when we think about our libraries, we're thinking about third places, which are really important. But then there's also this other need of just people wanting books. And so I think that's important to consider. And then I think that additional conversation about Proposition One and that ordinance, original intent, understanding that things have changed and that perhaps an indexing of, of that number could help consumer price indexes lower than construction costs inflation. But just doing that and looking at, seeing how that impacts things regardless, that would be interesting part of the conversation. Thank you for all you do, Director.
Madam Mayor, I have some proposals I wanted to circulate and then hopefully discuss. They're pretty consistent with what folks have said. But my hope would be that we could incorporate what was said today into these. And in the next week, send these formally over to Jessica that, and try to incorporate both council and board recommendations into it. I, I think this is what I'm proposing here is, is pretty consistent with what's been said today by both staff and council and the board. So I'd like to circulate that and then have a discussion about it. So we tried to, what I tried to do here in this is, is take in everything we've gotten from the consultant, Jessica's recommendations, and also align it with a, a need I think I have, and I think the public is looking for, and setting some reasonable timetables on when we can arrive at some of these decisions. For sake of this, I would, I would probably, I, I tried to structure this in a way that we could give as much time to staff to be responsive to this, but not too much that we miss our chance to incorporate any changes into a capital plan in twenty twenty-seven. So the first thing, just off the top, prioritizing repairs and maintenance. I think we're all aligned that that has to be the top priority. We have to make sure they're all integrated, both leased, owned and all that to promote the longevity and like ensure they remain open, safe and reliable. Next, on the downtown library, I know that we've made some investments there to promote its longevity, but I'm not clear on what it's, how long that facility has a, what's its, what's its shelf life? So I think we need more information about the investments that we've made and how long that's granted us there. Additionally, it seems like there's an opportunity to add a lot of square space by relocating administrative operations. I imagine that comes with a, a price tag for tenant or for improvements there. So understanding those costs, I think will be important before, like we make a decision on like, is this the place we're going to be for forty years? Can we even be there for forty years? And I think even if we're committed to the current location, I think it's important that we start planning now because given that this could be a nine-figure investment in the future for the amount of square space, square footage we need. I think we need to, in the near term, adopt a, a, a policy both as a board and as a council and as a city about what our intentions are with the downtown library. So I put in some things here related to that that might help us guide us on that decision, both on when staff could come back to us. But my goal would be within six months' time that we have a, a policy document that's been adopted by the board and by council signaling our intentions related to the downtown library. Next, on new facilities, this is consistent with what Councilmember Hallie Burton just mentioned. I find that the three-mile standard that's found in Blueprint Boise isn't useful to our goals anymore. Reason for that is it's a, it's a goal that we've already met. So pat on the back to past councils, libraries, for all the work that they've done to get our system to where it's at today. Additionally, as far as like an equity measure, I think the sustained public advocacy of Citizens for a Library indicates that it, it's as an equity measure, it's not meeting that need if the public is saying that there are access challenges in particular parts of the city. And then finally, consistent with what Councilmember Halliburton said, if we have something that's transit oriented, we can better use it in our, in our planning, which would be more appropriate for something like in a comprehensive plan. The types of standards that I'm proposing here would be to adopt something that's more consistent with state, regional and national averages to proximity to a library, which hovers between one point eight and two point four miles. If we could look at a, a, something like a fifteen-minute bike ride, that might get us closer to something that would identify areas where there may be needs for future libraries. Talk a little bit about the, how we weigh future libraries in here, which welcome to look at and give, provide feedback on. The, the one thing that I would flag is that I think we need to be considering the pressure on our existing system if we were to cite a new library. So for example, there is, if there's a facility where there's above average usage, but we can't, we can't expand that facility for one reason or another, how do we alleviate pressure on that particular facility? I think we've kind of talked about alternatives to a twenty-five thousand square foot space. Finally, on the lease facility, like are there creative opportunities for us to signal to the public that we're interested in alternative approaches there? Like for example, at Hillcrest or Colister, could we identify a geography where we'd be interested in expanding it sometime to send a signal to a public that we might be interested in some type of public-private partnership that would get us closer to the square footage that we would need for those to be more sustainable facilities? And then finally, I think staff is already doing this and I know they're limited, but trying to be creative and looking for opportunities in the future where we could either acquire annex space in or around a facility or expand on existing lots or nearby lots so that we can always be looking for opportunities to expand around libraries where we may not have enough space now. And then we've talked a little bit about the ordinance today. I think in the short term, I think there, these are problems with the, the problems with the ordinance we can navigate. I think in the long term, we need to have a more direct conversation with the public about, like even if we, we remain supportive of going to the public for a vote for a library, it may not be practical to do that without acquiring land, designing it and having cited a facility in the first place. So those are my recommendations. I would like to incorporate as much feedback in this from both the library board and council and staff as over the next week. And, but I would, I think what I'm looking for, at least from council, library board, welcome to jump in, would be to give direction to me to work. to me to work with staff on a realistic timeline, but also the library board, a leadership on where they might be, where they might want to see edits in this to navigate our kind of parallel responsibilities here over the next week, if this is consistent with your wishes.
Well, and what I'll jump in here, and this is reflective of the conversation today. And there are a couple things more in the weeds that we discussed that I would hand over to Jessica as well. I would suggest that we have staff take a look at the timing requests in this because there's various different dates in here. I see four, five and six months. And let's that be the first piece is that and I want to make sure that we provide staff with both clarity in terms of when we would like to see things, but flexibility in terms of being responsive to the things that we'd like to see, so that we're not overly prescriptive in the requests as it relates to a, a potential policy around citing or timing for maintenance operations. The good, better, best is a part of it that could be built in here and that that they have the opportunity to come to us with suggestions that are responsive to the requests that you're making today with, and examples of that with regard to citing policies and other things. I do want to say too, that land use planning in general needs to be incorporated into the citing, the citing policy we might have. We've, we're about to annex Muriro Farms, another 2,000 some homes. There's interest in the Southeast. So tying this as well, I'd like to see our planning staff work with the library director on how we tie not only a potential goal, like a 15 minute bike ride or 2.1 mile radius, but also a nod, since it's a 20 year plan, a nod to the fact that our borders might be changing as well.
Madam Mayor, if I could just add to that, Council President, I think it might be easier for staff if you collect the feedback from council and the Board of Trustees and provide it to us to be able to respond to it in its entirety. If we get pieces of it, I'm afraid we'll just kind of get lost in that. And we can do that before six months. So if you can return us with the full sense of feedback, then staff could return in a week to just, or however you see that, but everyone giving you feedback at the same time. And staff trying to react to it in real time can be problematic.
Okay. So I think what I'd propose is in, within the next week, I'll commit to getting that feedback to Jessica based on a conversation that was had here today and any follow up conversations with library board leadership. Madam Mayor. I'm, I'm not opposed to anything here. I did, I'm a little sensitive that we do have a board of directors, you know, for the library and that they're seeing some of this for the first time. Haven't really gotten a lot of opportunity to talk today and probably are going to need to look at this together as a group and have a conversation. And so I want to be a little sensitive about again timelines and, and what's realistic for this board to make sure that they're doing their role and due diligence in anything that's in here and that it lines up because there, it, it may and hopefully does. Or maybe it goes in a different direction, but I just want to flag a little bit that we haven't heard a lot from the board. They probably need a group meeting to chew on it.
Yeah, I'm going to propose that we not take real time feedback on this because it's new for everybody, but in the same way, the council president intends to get feedback from council members after review. We get that from the board and recognition, part of the recognition and the timing that I'll then ask library staff to think about the time that they need to bring proposals to us is because it is, this is the one area where the library director goes first to the board of directors of the library and then comes to us. And then there's that weird thing where we have the CIP process and the, and the money. So but the, but the timing, and I, and I believe that it's reflective of the process that at least my quick read of this memo reflects that process that is the reality of library planning.
Madam Mayor, if I'm just, I appreciate you raising that issue of how we have discussions with library board, bring them to council. I think what from a practical next step, we could certainly have a debrief discussion on the November Board of Trustee meeting where they would be able to react to the recommendation memo and we could, you know, have that in the packet. And then that conversation could be at the next board meeting.
Well, given that that's November, I would suggest that you collect then feedback from council, we, it's delivered to Jessica, we figure out from a leadership perspective of what works and there's something finalized that the board reacts.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, what I'd probably prefer to do is over the next week, incorporate council feedback, but also get library board leader, at least leadership feedback so that we're not dealing with like open meetings issues. So that the document before the library board in November has had some input from the library board.
That makes sense. All right, you got your work cut out for you next week. I want to, I want to thank everybody for the, both the staff that, and all the work that went into this, all the community that helped provide so much of the input in the last couple of years. That's the foundation for this and the board that's taking these, your role so seriously. I deeply appreciate it. And we, I, you know, we, we talk in terms of the challenges, but I do have to say, I think that there's a ton of opportunity. And it's exciting. There are, we're talking about a 20 year horizon. So while we start to pile up all the things we need to decide, it starts to get a little overwhelming. But then if we step back and realize that we're setting the foundation for the next 20, 20 years and beyond for the system and for our community, I think it's pretty exciting for all of us to be at this point. And so I'll deliver my chicken scratch to Jessica as well, that can be incorporated into the next steps. We'll look to hearing from the library board on some of these ideas. And then we'll develop a timeline and then work sessions that would ensue based on that timeline for us to delve deeper into the work that both the library, public works, and ultimately budget will come back to us. And then there's a whole bunch of that at the same time that we start the budgeting process and we need to have real conversations. And, and markers, frankly, I know that that's not a good word for budget people. I'm just going to use, it's my own word. Markers, if we know that in 15 years, we want to have the possibility of having something, then like working backwards and figuring out where that is. And so all of that matters now. The time is right. I think there's a ton of opportunity to take advantage of what we have to innovate and to come up with some guidelines that'll help us plan the next 20 years of service for Boiseans. And so look forward to the continued conversation. And with that, I'm going to propose that you do what you need to do to adjourn so we can go into executive session. And we're going to take dinner over exec.
So I would move that the Board of Trustees of the Boise Public Library Meeting adjourned.
All right. We have a motion a second. Do you need to do roll call?
I don't believe we need to do roll call. No, just we, we will leave you to the rest of your work. Thank you very much for, for, for this meeting. I think it's really helpful for us to, to hear, you know, from all of you. Certainly eye opening to me, the, the whole budgeting process, which we, speaking for myself, have not really been familiar with in the past and limitations and the opportunities and and I'm committed to work with you on going through this and seeing what we can, can do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It was wonderful to see you all. Thanks for giving us the time. And I'll take a motion to go into exec.
Madam Mayor, I think we need another motion first. This is related to the agenda. It's a second motion related to that. I move to accept the special meeting agenda of the Boise City Council listing an executive session. This item had been inadvertently included in the joint meeting of the Boise City Council and the Boise Library of Trustees.
Second. We have a motion and a second, clerk?
Halliburton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Stead.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries?
Madam Mayor, pursuant to Idaho Code Section 742061F, I move to enter executive session to communicate with legal counsel on pending litigation.
Second. Clerk?
Halliburton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Stead.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yeah.
Corliss.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries?
We'll be back at six.